This meeting is short, can I have a motion for adjournment? Saying none, we will not have a vote. Very much. The first item on our agenda is a roll call.
Harrington is absent, Mr. Furman is absent. Eric is running late, Mr. Landsman, we expect will be late. Ms. Newman is not going to be here, Mr. Rubin?
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. The first item of business is public comment. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comment? Any, so we'll move to the next topic. It's the fiscal year end 2018 report, Part One by Kathleen Kovach. And she's walking up, I have to compliment her on a wonderful job that she was just given. And it's not even a job, it's an award. And that was the outstanding speech that you gave afterwards.
Thank you so much.
You made us all proud.
I'm proud to be part of this organization and support the people that we do. Thank you again. I've asked Christine Burke to join me because we're going to be reviewing the last year's annual plan. And the part of the plan that we're reviewing has a lot to do with advocacy and empowerment. So she's going to help me present this plan. The dynamic duo as we are tonight. And as many of you know, the FY annual plan, FY 18 annual plan, was the last annual plan of the previous three-year strategic plan. So this is year three of the previous plan. Slide talks about the seven strategic priorities. And those were the static priorities over the last three years. And today Christine and I are going to talk about the first two. Administration and operations, and advocacy and empowerment. Under administration and operations, we've been doing a lot of work around accreditation over the last three years. And so this first goal and objective has to do with being accredited through the National Committee on Quality Assurance, or NCQA. NC, excuse me, NCQA. We have a number of objectives there. We have managed to meet 100% completion in all areas. We really have taken this last year to continue to build processes relative to meeting those compliance requirements. We did have a mock survey that was completed. We had a few items that we needed to adjust. And we had to be ready for the survey by December 1st. We are. So we're in the sixth month period prior to our survey. And our survey will be completed in July of this year. So hopefully in FY 19, we can checkmark complete on this whole project. The next goal area has to do with office relocation. And as many of you know, we relocated to this building last October. So we are complete with this goal and objective. One of the things that we've really been focusing on is data analytics and technology. In terms of data analytics, we had a goal and objective relative to dashboards and data, and looking at data in our evidence-based practices. We do have dashboards completed for evidence-based practices for adults with mental illness, as well as children with serious emotional disturbance. So we are 100% complete in that objective. In terms of innovative technology, we've been looking at a lot of product lately. I do have to say with Objective One, we wanted to look at what is called business intelligence solutions. I had to get an update today to make sure I understood. But we really are talking about looking at, is there a different type of dashboard that we want to use? Right now, we use iDashboard. We really put this objective on hold because we migrated from Google Services to Microsoft this year. So we're in the process now of looking at a Microsoft dashboard solution. Doesn't say we're going to go ahead and purchase it, but we want to do an evaluation this year. And in terms of Objective Two, I know we've long been looking at personal emergency response systems. We've had a bit of a lag in that, but we find ourselves probably in a better spot today because of the technology that's advanced. And so we are looking at some products that will help with dispensation of medication. And at the same time, use something that will, can communicate relative to people in their own homes and being safe. So you'll hear more of that in the next couple of months as we move forward with that initiative. Performance-based contracting, I know many of the people who work here have been before you talking about performance-based contracting, value-based purchasing. Pretty much the same thing. We have moved most of the population groups into value-based purchasing. The last group that we're looking at tends to circle around or be associated with people with intellectual developmental disabilities. There's a draft that's been completed and it's being shared with the providers. And we'll be moving forward with that this fiscal year. We have continued to look at our current contracts related to value-based purchasing. And I must say, we did meet with folks upfront to get their input and certainly buy in. We know that as we've rolled out a number of these value-based purchasing initiatives, we've had to do some really legitimate tinkering with the service models and the costing as we meet with providers and talk about what's working, what isn't working, and what's viable to fiscally support the network to achieve good outcomes for people. The next slide has to do with provider network development and management. And folks from the Service Network team have also talked to you this year about issuing requests for proposals. As you are well aware, in January of last year, we started to directly manage the contracts for skill-building or vocational services. And as of October this year, residential contracts. We've also done some expansion in the area of applied behavioral analysis. And we have looked at wraparound services and added some expansion in that area too. Thank you very much, the strategic plan. Next three-year strategic plan was approved in July of last year. And this FY 19 plan, annual plan, is based on that strategic plan. Now we're going to talk about some advocacy and empowerment efforts, yes? It is, sure.
I'm curious to know if it's possible to have, I'm looking at the performance-based contracting and the elements of that. And is it possible, I have no interest in seeing the contract, but I wondered if you could create some sort of summary that would help me better understand what some of the measures that you're using are?
Sure. I would suspect that was presented to you. And certainly, we look at evidence-based practices in some areas, as well as housing, employment, and those social determinants of health. But we can give you a, maybe a, I'm not sure if we can do it in one page, but maybe an easy guide that talks about the various population groups and the outcomes we're looking for? Is that what you're looking for?
Actually, in terms of what you've identified in the performance-based contracting, I just, if there was something that would give me an example of what you look for for performance levels, what's on the table as far as incentives go? And how it's evaluated, that kind of, just so I have a better picture of what it is you're looking at. I don't, not interested in the contract itself, but just perhaps a better guide to...
We have dashboards around that and we can develop a guide, maybe revisit the dashboards around those.
That would be helpful to me.
Maybe an example or two.
I don't know if everybody else is, but that would really be helpful, a refresher on that one.
We'll have to get that for a previous, I mean, forthcoming presentation.
No urgency, but I would just like a little bit better picture of that.
And as I said, we've been modifying them all along. So I think it also helps to understand what we've seen, what we've learned, and what we've changed along the way, kept and changed along the way. Okay. You're welcome. And now we're going to talk about advocacy, yes?
Back to the administration and operations. You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. There's a thought of moving from Google to Microsoft.
Yes, we have actually. In October of last year, we rolled out Microsoft 365.
We zeroed in on the final cost to that. I know we were, there was some conversation about the amount that it costs to move over.
I do not recall the cost, but yes, we have because we entered into an agreement to move from Microsoft, excuse me, from Google to Microsoft. But we can get you that information.
Okay, so what have we learned from that move? That was a big move.
Well, it was a big move in certain...
I guess I was kind of asking, what have we learned from it as opposed to, you know, from switching from Google to Microsoft?
I think we've all learned, as when there is any change, there is a transition period where there's the opportunity to learn and relearn the components of Microsoft. So I think a number of people have been in various stages of coming into understanding and competency. And we have ongoing training relative to that. I know I've requested additional training because I think I can get more streamlined and understand it better. So it is a very, for many people, it's a very different product. That's what we've learned.
Okay.
I think there's so many new things that can be done with it that we didn't have with Google, but they're different and some things are different. So in the translation, there's always learning.
More than just financial decision?
Oh, yes, yes. We're doing teaming in a different way, groups in a different way. It's a different way of actually operating as an organization, so.
Is this an ongoing cash expense?
Yes, just as there had been a monthly cost to Google, there is a monthly cost to Microsoft. If you want additional information on that, we can get that for you if you'd like an update. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to shed some light on that. I know we made the transition, there was licensing cost. I know we hit the consulting cost outputs with the transition. It's been challenging. But it's also been my understanding that by moving to this, like you brought up teams, there's better collaboration tools. So the cost value, whatever that's called, cost-value proposition was there. Value, whatever it is, the value proposition was there for making that move.
Okay, I'll try this again. Now we're going to talk about advocacy and empowerment. And certainly in this area, Christine and her staff have had a lot of input and efforts and have been working with a wide group of folks. So I'm going to turn it over to her now.
In addition to those urgent advocacy calls to action, we made a decision last year to be very intentional and strategic in how we advocate for the public mental health system. Part of that plan included the creation of the Just Like You video and also putting together advocacy work groups. So at the time that this plan was in place, we had scheduled a meeting. We put out a call for two community leaders, people who receive services or family members, and sent a list of five areas of interest, which were identified by various surveys, and asked people to come share their ideas with us. We had about 70 people attend the first meeting. We broke up into groups. And our goal at that time was we wanted to really hear the voices of the people we serve and our advocates and use that information to build our campaign. Our next meeting is scheduled actually this week. And we have put together a 12-month calendar identifying a different area of advocacy per month. So one month, we may focus on housing. One month, we may focus on the direct care staff. One month, we'll focus on 298. And then each of those groups will be responsible for leading that effort. And our thought in doing that is we don't want people to get advocacy fatigue. And we also don't want to become white noise to our legislators. So we're trying to be very mindful of their time and also mindful of the time of our advocates and our community supporters. And we're excited about the input they gave us. We have not put the information on the website yet because I wanted their approval. We wanted to make sure that we hit the mark on their comments and their remarks. I expect that we'll probably have it up the end of this week. Emily and my team put together a great calendar. We're going to pull it up, we're going to let them look at the comments. We're going to ask for some other input in terms of not just social media, but who's encouraged by letter writing, who would like to call. And then after that, we'll include a section where we keep people updated on news articles so that there will be this one-stop shop for advocacy resources. So we're, we think the energy was really good in the room. People were very positive and they were responsive and emailing us and calling us and feeling empowered to speak with their legislators. That is where we are in empowerment and advocacy, that specific piece right now. Any questions? Anti, yeah. The anti-stigma initiative, so as I mentioned, the Just Like You video, which at the time was produced last year, CLS was involved. We were involved, CNS. The video was complete. As dictated by our plan, we produced, or Vicky produced, smaller snippets to be used for training materials for direct care staff. We keep the video on our website. We have shared the video with all the CMHs throughout the state. One of the other things, we were trying to really, as we take all these initiatives, how do they complement one another? We have standard presentations that we use in the community. We are going to incorporate the video in those standard presentations. We also took an opportunity, when the new legislators took office and we sent our thank, or congratulations to them, we included the video for them to view as well. Those are some of the ways we're working with the video. Malkaya and I work closely together from the anti-stigma, CNS anti-stigma team. She now sits on a number of the same community partnerships and work groups that I do. So giving that perspective of, are we thinking we're doing something good, but maybe we're creating stigma ourselves? And she has been so well-received wherever we have gone together. And just her perspective has changed really how we communicate sometimes in the community and sharing our message about stigma and helping educate people about the barrier it can create for people to seek the help they need.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about civil rights and guardianship. And one of the goals we had was to develop a local training package to advance people's civil rights, so they certainly, so that they could maintain them and regain them, as we like to say. What we did locally was defer to the statewide group. There is a group, actually it's called Supported Decision Making. And it's been launched by the Developmental Disabilities Council. It has a wide representation from people supported, community mental health organizations, PIHPs, the various advocacy organizations, PNA, the Developmental Disabilities Institute, the schools, to really talk about supported decision-making. Last year, there was a statewide summit and several of us attended it. I do sit on the statewide group. It was also part of a subcommittee that developed a position statement on supported decision-making. So we're in the process of reviewing that at the local level. And we will be following the statewide work plan, which includes dissemination of some videos that have already been filmed and are in the process of being edited. We have a probate judge who sits at the helm of the probate, the statewide probate association. And she is an advocate of supported decision-making. So we know we'll be doing some work with the judicial branch. And we also, through that statewide group, are working with an educator who will be traveling the state, talking to the intermediate school districts about young people who are approaching age 18 and the fact that there is something different that is available to them besides, actually to them and their families, besides guardianship. So you will hear more of that as we go forward.
I think that's really good because this topic's hot and heavy, if you will, or focused. I know there's a June recipient rights conference, or training conference. And this was one of the topics the RAC folks brought up, the guardianships, so.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, it is, and it's covering the same topic of training.
All right, thank you.
Terms of community education, as mentioned in past presentations, we do respond to requests for speakers to participate in different community events. But we're also very proactive in making reporters and our community partners of different monthly observances or events that are going on that are related to the public mental health system or to our services. We continue to work with our core providers. We meet quarterly, we have a PR work group. All of our providers are invited, 100 and something now. We used to be a small group attendant, so it's a very diverse group. They bring with them a certain amount of expertise that helps make us all aware of what they're working on. Sometimes we sit where we sit and we're cognizant of, well, we provide these services and this is what we're doing in the community. What we've learned during these meetings is that we can partner or that maybe we are working on similar community projects. And how do we join and how do we support each other? So that has gone well and continues to go well. And it was exciting for us to be able to invite all of our new partners. And it's a really fun, lively group, they're all very creative. We talk about different initiatives that we may want to start. We work together on community resources there. An example being in March, when we're having our ability awareness rally. So that's one example of how we've come together to be more supportive of each other in our outreach efforts to the community. We continue to monitor our work group memberships. So if an individual transfers to a different department or maybe makes a career change, my team will notify that manager or that director that there was a member of their staff who's had a role. Rachel Densmore, for example, leads our housing initiative. So if Rachel were to switch to a different department, then we would work with Jillian or Adam to find someone to fill that spot. We do take, every year, we sit down, we look at our plan and we try to identify, are we missing a gap? One year, we noticed we really weren't, didn't have enough supports for veterans. So how do we get more involved there? There was another time where we looked at, do we have enough supports for elderly individuals in our community? So we take the time not just to look at what we've done, but are we missing a need in our community? The other thing we talked about, we get a significant amount of funding that we can use toward awareness specific to SUD. It's not the same to be said about the mental health side of our business. And so we made a decision to develop a comprehensive media campaign to educate the community overall about mental health. One for access, one for awareness, and then one for anti-stigma. It was all developed by the end of the month or by the end of the plan, but we had to wait to do some creative work. And that will launch in February of this year. So we're excited about the way their balance would be. There will be our SUD marketing, which includes billboards, bus ads. We have some cable, we have radio. And then on those off months, we'll be doing just general mental health and awareness of the public mental health system. And I think that's it.
Person-centered planning and family-centered planning remains extremely important to us. We have had a lot of discussions at the local level. We had actually, in a previous annual plan, embarked on developing some local training. We also know that Section 298 input indicated inconsistency across the state as well as the need for the department to step up and really lead the way. They have since hired a staff person whose responsibility is to focus on person-centered planning and self-determination. The state has also convened a statewide work group. And both Nicole Lawson and I sit on that work group. And between the two of us, we've attended at least three meetings. They do not meet every month, but as needed. They have rolled out some training and we've, slides, if you will. And we've provided robust feedback to that to make sure that as a base, we understand, or the system understands, person-centered planning and that it includes support, services, as well as treatment. Because the first rollout really focused on treatment and had a real motivational interviewing approach, which in and of itself is fine. But we believe that that is a segment or a piece of person-centered planning. So we continue to work with the state on establishing a baseline training approach for person-centered planning. Any changes that come to the person-centered planning process via our contract, excuse me, via our contract with the department is shared with our network. We have the Improving Practices Leadership Meeting, which is the clinical group from across the network. And we discuss those changes. We change our policy and we also change our protocol based on any changes made by the department. There really have been no significant changes at this point in time. The department continues to focus on a couple of things, however. And they focus on self-determination and independent facilitation. So we've had some discussions at our local level here. We know that we need to get, and continually need to get more robust in educating people about self-determination, especially people with mental illness, so that they understand their options. And we will continue to work with the department at the state level and provide those options to people at the local level.
We are so excited about our new directory, which Marquita's team led that initiative. Such a benefit to the people we serve. We used to have just a list of our providers. And so people could just look to see, well, who do we contract with? They worked, Marquita and her team worked with our providers to gather information and data that would make that choice be more easily available to people and help them be more educated about their decisions. So we compiled all the information, tried to make it user-friendly. It's a dropdown list. If somebody were to come to our website and he or she had a child who had autism, they could click service, they could look, find the word autism, click on autism, and then it lists all of our providers who offer autism services. And we decided to do two different directories, one specific to agency, only in organization only. But on the same page, there's also a selection for practitioners. So if somebody may want a male or a female to work with his or her family member, they can identify male. If somebody wants a specific language, they select language. And then what's populated for them is all of the criteria that meets their requirements. And so very excited at the time, at the end of this particular plan. It was almost complete, but there were some logistics in cleaning up the data to make sure that it functioned well. So it is up. We do have the capability as well to print it in a PDF format if people want to download that. Part of this was NCQA. But I will say that even above just the NCQA, that Marquita and her team took a lot of time to look down and say, not just are we meeting those requirements, but what is going to be the... but what is going to be the most beneficial to the people we serve? So, it is under our service information link. We have it in two or three different places, but if you click under our service information link, and you'll be able to use it if you want, just to see the functionality. And if you have any input, please offer it to us. We did give it to the providers and asked for their input as well. I don't think I had it up three hours, and I was getting calls that said, hey, I see my agency's on there, but can you add this information too? And so, their input was helpful in developing it, and their feedback in helping to improve it has been beneficial to all of us. And then myself and Mike work on the customer services handbook. We routinely get update requests from the state. Changes that we've made in recent years have included adding SUD providers, the Section 1557 language about discrimination. So, there is language in 15, I think, different languages across the state, how people, to tell people if they feel their rights have been violated. We make the changes. We're allowed to modify it and personalize it in some ways if we'd like. We send it back to the state, and they approve it. We do that two or three times a year. Now, the state does not require us to get rid of the books we have in hand. If they have corrections and additions that they want, they let us use the books that we have, but they expect that our next print, that we add their revisions. And so, that is how our customer service handbook works. We do talk with our PR work group members and with our providers about ensuring that the people we serve get the handbooks at the time when they access services. It's no use if people don't have it, and we have seen an increase in that as well. Usually what I do at the end of the year is I look at the number of individuals who are new to receiving services, and I can compare that to how many copies we distributed or printed, and they should be close in line. And if they're not, I usually call around to find out who's asking for the books, who's not asking for the books, and if they're not, to make sure that they have them in hand.
Directly first, I have a couple of questions with that. Do you run that, did you have a presentation available to the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee for them to kind of take a look at it, see what was relevant to them, if they had any input? And I think sometimes the Rights Advisory Committee is overlooked when we do that. I mean, the CAC is critical, but the composition of the Rights Advisory Committee is very strong in terms of the people that we serve too.
I'll have to follow up on that. There, I know there was a committee in place. My role was mostly making sure that it was functional, that it made it to our website. So, I'll check with Marquita and make sure I get back to who actually looked at it.
Great, I'm just staring at Marquita.
I think she's nodding.
That's great, because I just, those are such key elements. And like I said, sometimes I think we don't use that aspect of the Rights Advisory Committee makeup as fully as we could. So, I would like to heighten that awareness, just, you know, going forward. And my other question was regarding, in the community education, you said that now we have many contracts with many providers, and so it's a much larger group. And I was thinking, I know we talk about empowerment a lot of times in terms of the folks we serve, but I'm wondering if the providers now feel a little bit more empowered, the newer providers, I mean, in terms of contracting, they're not new to our system, but in terms of that dynamic, because it seems like it might make the communication loop a little straighter?
We did do a specific communications presentation to all of our new providers. They are included in all of our email correspondence. We have an electronic mail distribution system that we use, broken down by service delivery, so we can be very intentional in whom we're trying to communicate with. I will say that since some of our new providers have contracted with us, that there have been instances where they have reached out to me based on those initial conversations. I've had two or three where we've said, we want to support you here, the types of resources that we can provide, and circumstances arose where they did need our support and were in contact with us.
Kind of an important link.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
My question has to do with the general public. So, we sort of live in a bubble here where we're focused on the people we serve, we're focused on our immediate community. And I know we did billboards at one time that I found, I got comments from people in the general public asking me questions. So, how do you monitor general public understanding of our system and the fact that we want them to also become advocates for our system?
In some instances, that's, we're successful in doing that by those work groups we sit on, because the work groups we sit on are not specific to our public mental health system. So, we sit on work groups for school transition, where there are a number of community partners involved. We sit on substance use task force, we sit on the suicide prevention task force. We have contact with different faith-based organizations. So, anytime we have going something, something going on within our system, we contact other organizations that are just community partners.
Right, because I want our community to be a conversation at the dinner table, or at school meetings, or church groups. And I think that's a goal. And like you said, now I hear, I'll meet teachers that say, oh, yeah, we're getting some mental health training. And I said, oh, yeah, that's part of Oakland Community Health Network. So, that's, I can feel that going around.
We often ask for help from the Health Division as well. They have a much larger listserv we have throughout the county. So, if there's something of importance going on that we want the general public to know, they share that information frequently for us. We do really rely upon our reporters' support as well. So, we have two or three reporters who are great advocates for us, that if there's something important we need the general public to know, we can call and ask them to write a story or to interview someone, and they've always been very receptive and helpful.
I know you work on that, so thank you.
I just add, I know, I play on Facebook a lot, and you have like 20 public service announcements a day on Facebook, and I mentioned the other social media that I'm not on. A lot of good stuff on there, and people make comments. I know they're reading them.
I'm going to brag about Debbie. This is her new role for her, and we really wanted to strengthen our presence on social media, and she took that challenge. And immediately, we saw an increase, positive responses from people, and we intentionally in our conversations, that we want them to be messages of hope, not just news articles. We want them to impact people's daily lives where they see something we've put in thought, that's something to celebrate, or that's something to practice. So, we post on Twitter, on Facebook, on Instagram, and on LinkedIn. And Suzanne likes Pinterest, I had to look over. We all have our favorites. Suzanne likes Pinterest, so those are the areas in which we share social media.
I know that in some of my driving, I see the Detroit Wayne billboards on, right at where the lodge converts into Northwestern Highway or whatever. And I know we used to have some things on the buses.
We do. We still have messaging. We actually have our next campaign starting next week. That will be at General Mental Health. We have some digital billboards. We met with our vendor, and were kind of specific in where we wanted them. So, there will be one in Southfield, there's one at the interchange of I-75 and 696, there's another digital that will be near University and 75, so people who are making that journey from the city through North Oakland County. The nice thing about billboards, especially in the northern part of the county, is with a billboard, if someone does not purchase that space, you hold on to it. They don't take your messaging down. So, there are times specifically with our SUD messaging where we would, we publicize quarterly, but our message would sit up for three months. So, this time now, we wanted to be careful, too, we weren't taking our own space out, so we had to really look at the map across the county, those areas where we are serving a lot of people, and just be very, I think, intentional in our messaging to make sure that we're reaching people and that they know they can call us.
We're in the public eye.
And I'd like to also add that the training opportunities that we afford through this building also are part of public outreach. And thanks to Mary Kucharik, we hosted a training for the Oakland County Bar Association, and I believe 40 to 50 lawyers were in this very room, and we had the opportunity to talk to them about who we are and the services we support, and they know that we are a resource to them. So, they certainly take that information into the community. So, it's multifaceted, multi-layered approach to communication and education.
I think live streaming recordings, so that particular training, we recorded, and then people will be able to see that on our YouTube channel. And whenever we have different events, the spring when we have our suicide prevention forum again, the rally, we record those events, and then we share them throughout the state. And so, on some level, we're helping the state and our partners to offer the same types of services. They're learning from the things we're doing in our community after seeing it on Facebook or seeing the video and saying, how did you guys do that? Who did you bring on board? Who can I contact? So, that's very exciting as well.
I'd like to compliment you both, or any of the staff, that reached such a great highlight here for 100% completion, and even if it's 90 and 75% in two issues, you've done a great job.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the staff at this organization, we appreciate your acknowledgement.
I have a question.
You have a question? Gosh, okay.
If you would, go back to page 10. Believe me, I'm not trying to play I got you, okay? But I just want you to explain to me, refresh my memory on strategic planning, just above objective one, where you mentioned the annual plan and budget, which is developed for each year of the three-year strategic plan. I think I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you presented, the board was presented with a three-year budget. Are you imagining that, or can you find out if you don't know? Does anybody else remember a three-year budget? Okay, that's fine.
It's an annual budget that goes with each year of the three-year strategic plan. I do believe, though, at one point in time, the budget and finance team did a projection, was it a three-year projection?
No.
So, we did not tie that specifically to the strategic plan.
Okay, that was my real, that's where I was going with that. Is there any way that I could get a copy of that three-year financial projected budget?
Presentation that the budget and finance team did? Yeah, I think it's in the board agenda in a minute, so we can get you a copy.
Any other questions? Well, we'll move on. Thank you very much for a very good presentation.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Most of you probably recognize my face. I'm Amy Heinselman. I'm the clinical supervisor here, and...
I'm Kim Christie. I'm the social emotional consultant for Oakland County.
So, this afternoon, it's our pleasure to bring to you some information about one of the grants that we have for very young children. The grant history is, we were invited to participate in a grant on the second year of its implementation, and it was a grant that was funded to the Department of Education in partnership with Michigan Department of Community Health. We had a position in, a person in the position for just about a year completing the requirements, and then she accepted a position within our organization, so she didn't leave us. And then we had a slight gap about two months before we were able to find and hire Kim. The, part of the challenge with this grant is it requires very specific credentials in infant mental health endorsement, so it's a bit challenging to find people that have that very specific credential. We're very pleased that we have Kim now. She's been here for a year. I'll get to the funding, how it was funded by the Department of Education first, and where it is now, and what they expect in the future as well. The primary goals for this grant are for, again, very young children, zero to six-year-olds, to prevent them from being expelled from daycare. That's a thing. It's a disturbing thing, that such young children can start out in their life with such negative and traumatic experiences by being expelled from daycare. We're working at reducing that number of children that are expelled, and Kim will go into greater detail on the goals, but the overall goal is to reduce that number, improve the emotional health and well-being of young children, which in turn improves the chance for school success, as well as providing a healthier start in life. We have specific goals that we have to report quarterly to the department, and these are the goals that we report quarterly. Again, Kim will have the opportunity to talk to you and tell you what all that means. But based on the goals that we report quarterly, maintaining Kim's qualifications, again, she has very specific endorsements that she has to maintain, there's money in the grant that provides for training and credentialing for her. She has to use a very specific type of evidence-based practices and how the referrals are accepted, processed things, and we've been 100% successful on both of those items. The third goal that we report to the state in E grams is that Kim has a minimum number of outreach contacts that she's expected to provide quarterly. She provides above and beyond. So, if we could have, I don't know, 200% as our outcome, it would be that. But obviously, we can only represent 100% as meeting that expectation. The fourth and last goal that we report to the department on is that Kim and/or I have to participate in quarterly meetings with the entire grant team statewide. That used to include the Michigan Department of Education. That funding's changed, and so we're now funded through the Michigan Department of Community Health. So, it's a little bit different, but we're expected to either attend in person quarterly in Lansing, or participate electronically. They have a Zoom meeting and phone participation as well. So, the impact that we have on young children in Oakland County is to, again, reduce the expulsion from daycare, to enhance the education and awareness for daycare professionals and parents about positive responses to childhood behavior, and to promote healthy interaction among children in daycare settings. That's often what gets young children expelled from daycare, is the negative interactions that happen, the fighting and, you know, hurting other children in daycare. And then our funding for this, as I stated, our total budget is $108,150. That covers Kim's salary, the fringes, all of her training, including travel and conference, and reflective supervision. That's another specific grant requirement. It's a type of supervision that you have to be trained in. You have to have the credentials in infant mental health. I don't have those, so we contract out for that, and that's covered and funded in the grant. Then, we will go to Kim, and she can talk. Then we will go to Kim, and she can talk to you about that training.
Okay. I'm hoping to make what Amy just presented applicable in real life, so to speak. First of all, I am absolutely in love with this job. It is the best job I've ever had. And it does require, I'm going to go back to the goals for a second, the qualifications. So I'm a Level 3 out of a Level 4. I'm a Level 4 candidate through MYAM, which is the accrediting body. That's the highest kind of credentialing you can get. I also have a two-year postgraduate degree in infant mental health. And in addition to that, through this grant, we were offered an opportunity to be the first in the nation to sit for the early childhood mental health credential, which I will be a Level 4 in also. So that probably doesn't sound real interesting to you, but to me, it's super exciting because it's, I love, I love the work I'm doing, and I love the research and the competencies that I have to demonstrate in order to keep my job. So it's fun. Let's see, required, right now, we, well, we have served, Amy mentioned that we did the 2019 goals. However, in 2018, I became employed here in February of 2018. And all state goals from onboarding through completion of 2018 were met in advance of the dates that they were due, and they were met at 100% or higher, as Amy mentioned. We also, as far as outreach goes, this is where I really feel we have impact, not only in Oakland County, but hopefully across the state nationally, because we, my, the accrediting body for the credentialing process that I mentioned are the leaders. So Michigan really is a leader in Zero to Three, starting years back. And they now go to other states and other nations and begin programs. So this ECM, the Early Childhood Mental Health Credential, as I mentioned, the first group in the nation is going through that now, will then hopefully become the model and example across the nation, too. So as far as outreach goes, I absolutely love, love training. The brain is my favorite part of the body. And I just finished a Train the Trainer through Zero to Three, which is also a national organization that does a lot of policy and lobbying and advocacy for Zero to Three. It's actually Zero to Five, but Zero to Three is kind of how it all started. So that particular training, I'm offering three full-day trainings, two in February, or one in February and two in March. And that training includes the building of a brain. So Harvard, if you look at some of the Trauma Gurus, Harvard has a game called the Brain Architecture Game. I actually got to try it out on the UM team here when I provided a training for that staff. And I, it was really well received. So I do all teaching through the senses, so all learning is received through the senses. So, for example, if you use a writing implement versus a computer, you're going to store it in a different, and access it through a different part of the brain, shaking aside, through a different part of the brain. So if you were to come to one of my trainings, you would be very active throughout the whole thing. I engage all of the senses, and I do that in ways that sort of force participants into situations that children with sensory processing disorders experience their world and their life. But I do it in a way I hope that's very kind and gentle. So in addition to that, the other important thing I wanted you to know on a practical application is, is three things. If you remember three numbers today, these are the numbers I would like you to remember. So I, Amy was gracious enough to make me some model brains that I can use in my trainings. When we are born.
I made brains this weekend.
Our brains, she made brains. They're here if you'd like to touch them later. But the newborn brain is less than a pound, and the full-grown brain is over three pounds. And if you look at brain development, 80 to 90% of that occurs in the first three to five years of life. So Zero to Three, we are building our citizens' brains. And the reason why this impacts us is that so many of our children are in childcare. And from an attachment and brain-based perspective, the quality of care equals the quality of competency. So I appreciate, I'm looking for Kathleen, I think, yeah. While I appreciate the SED promotion, I really, really would love us all to think about really promoting identification and services in that Zero to Three range, because, like I said, 80 to 90% of the brain is developed during that period of time. And if you think about it, Zero, in the first year of life, a million, a million synapses a second, a million synapses a second, a million synapses a second are formed. So if we don't do that early identification with sensory feeding, eating, learning, by 18 months, we're already kind of behind as far as servicing children. And another number I would really love for you to remember from this presentation is the return on investment. So depending on who you research and what type of intervention is implemented, your return on investment can be anywhere from $7 to $17 if it's done very well. Again, it depends on the type and the quality of the service. But if you are going to look at your bang for the buck, the earlier we get in there and provide quality services, the less the recidivism, excuse me. And also, if you look at the numbers, so I've researched numbers from SED and Zero to Three, and it, if you look at the evidence-based brain models and interventions, you'll see that, and again, this is a really broad general statement, but you can see that many of the children in Zero to Three don't enter our system after the infant mental health services. So I can't think of a better way to spend our money than to really look at early identification and quality implementation of services. I'm a little nervous. Oh, and the expulsion rate is three times. So Zero to Five, children Zero to Five are expelled three times more than all primary and secondary schools combined. Three times more expulsion than K through 12. They call it the preschool-to-prison pipeline, and I do not like that phrase. I don't like the phrase. It breaks my heart. African-American males are among the highest expelled, next are Latino males, and then African-American females. A large part of this grant focused on implicit bias and bringing cultural sensitivity and integration into our centers and into our community. I love that part of my job also, and have been able to see shifting, even, I guess I would say awarenesses to begin with, so that implicit bias, we use the tenants, and I can't think of the name right now, it's escaping me, but we, we use the cultural competency tenants. And we also use the CEFL model. Part of, part of my training when I first started exceeded 200 hours. And then, that's not counting the Train the Trainer and a lot of other training. So it really is a highly specialized position. However, it's also very applicable, because I get to do the, kind of the administrative programmatic piece here, and then I get to go out and actually immerse myself in the community and help professionals grow. So there's programmatic consultation and targeted consultation. The programmatic consultation, to date, has been in excess of 1,400 people that we've been able to influence through this grant in the last year. That's why I believe so heavily in the, in the brain training, because it really, it's done in such a fun and engaging way that teachers respond, and often parents respond, in altering their caregiving. And that's really important when we look at the amount of childcare hours in relation to attachment quality and the ability to lead a, lead a successful life.
So Kim kind of blew through our slides.
I did not go in order.
In her own order, which is okay. She gets very excited and passionate about what she does, and that's one of the things I enjoy. I get the most fun texts from her. I got one that said, you'll never believe what I'm covered in. And I, I texted back, I don't want to know.
No.
Working with very young children, you just never know. So anyway, do you want to?
I wanted, I'll wrap it up. Yes, I do. All learning, one more example is learning through sensory-based techniques. And play usually takes 20 repetitions to learn a new behavior. If we're using rote examples, which is what our school systems are really designed for, it takes a minimum of 400 repetitions. So the whole idea in brain-based intervention, brain-based teaching, brain-based parenting, is to provide the environment in which we get, hopefully, the highest quality outcome with the brain. In conclusion, let's see, what would you like to know in conclusion?
My three takeaways.
My three takeaways, again, one million a second, one million one second, one million synapses in one second, 90% of the brain by age five. So we've got to get in there by 18 months to really have that time, that plastic time to work with these children. And a lot of people don't understand infant mental health, or even early childhood intervention or prevention, even among professionals. So I think sometimes it gets sort of overlooked, because we don't know what to do with them. But I know what to do with them. I'll be happy to show anybody what to do with them. I'm being sort of facetious, but that, I've been in this field for 25 years, and the thought of Zero to Three is very attractive to me when you look at the brain, the brain science. One million, one second. So Zero to Five, 90% of the brain, and the last bang for your buck is return on investment. Depending, again, on the research, anywhere from $7 to $17 when you use evidence-based models very well, when they're done well. And with that return on investment for every dollar spent, I, I look to early intervention services as a very hopeful field of endeavor. I think that's it.
Thank you. So I know that Laura licensed, the state regulatory, whatever they're called, they license all the childcare centers or the daycare centers.
Correct.
Are you using their listing from the county to target outreach?
Well, that's a really good question. Through, this was a pilot program, and in two years it evolved, so it's changed. So Great Start is, we collaborate with them. I have a very good relationship with the QIC, the Quality Improvement Consultant, through Great Start. However, as those funding sources change, we have expanded, and we're also looking for new and creative ways for sustainability. So the long answer is yes, and the short answer is yes and. So yes, we use that. We use a star rating system. The Great Start to Quality star rating system is from one to five, and we prioritize based on, on centers that have the lowest ratings and need the most help.
They also, the grant had written into it, a priority was for home care providers, as well as center-based. So it wasn't just center-based, which we had a previous grant many years ago, the CCEP Grant, and that one was focused only on center-based in certain geographic areas where Kim can do home care providers, as well as all of Oakland County.
You can also go into professional agencies and provide training. So if anyone wants to build a brain, you're welcome to come to one of those.
She's got some.
I was wondering if you could walk me through your referral loop. How does that work?
Yes, it's similar to what Jonathan just asked. So as, as we collaborated with the Department of Education, there was a structure that is now being restructured. So originally, we had United Way, MDHHS, MDE. And as part of the grant, the consultants through Great Start to Quality were our, I think, our only referral base, although we could self-refer if we ran into someone in the field. We are now able to generate referrals. So the woman who was in this position before is now at Access, and I work closely with her. She could probably provide referrals and has through Access Center. That hasn't happened very often. We're looking to use some substance abuse and trauma dollars, so we're hoping that as we partner with different funding sources, that we will also use those as a referral source. However, ideally, anyone within this network, all providers, would be educated in a way that they would then be able to refer.
Kim also sits on several early childhood county committees. And so she presents information, and she can receive referrals through, not, not just our mental health network, but from the, the community agencies that sit on those same committees.
So at this point, I would take, I could take a referral from anyone in the county, and I would still collaborate with the QIC at Great Start, even though we're not, quote, kind of in that structure anymore. We still, we still collaborate with, part of the, well, and this might change, but part of the condition was that they would be willing to participate in that rating system and improve their rating. And so I find it really beneficial to have a really good working relationship with Great Start to Quality, because we're all kind of doing the same thing, but they're, we might serve different populations with different needs, I guess. But I would still send the referral through that, through the QIC. And again, that might change, I'm not sure. I think we'll find that out Tuesday. I'm going to Lansing, and they're going to up to date the latest policy.
I know there was a point in time when we used the ISD as, as a referral for infant mental health services. And it didn't, well, certainly has evolved. I mean, there's no question about that. Is there any community-generated referral?
Well.
That, I mean, if somebody just heard about the possibility?
That's a really good question. I, that, yes, if they heard about the possibility, they could refer. However, I was brainstorming as I was listening to Kathleen present, because I thought about the outreach, like public service announcements or reporting. I also thought about educating or collaborating with pediatricians. So in other counties, they actually had a collaborative committee of pediatricians who had a high Medicaid population, and started to work with them to access services much earlier than what we were seeing. And I was invited to talk to a group of WIC employees. So again, I'm just starting to kind of do agency outreach. My, my thought, too, would be to get into DHS and really help them understand what services are available. And to me, a DHS, a foster care case should be, anything under three should be an automatic referral to IMH. That's my stance. That doesn't happen. And so we're catching kids, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12, and they're in the SED programs, and I'm glad that we have those. However, when you look at the research and you look at the money, we could be maybe, perhaps, more fiscally responsible by looking at the Zero to Three. That's, and then you mentioned the attorney training. I whispered to Amy, I would love to be in that room, because I would love to really get some education out there with regard to family law, so.
I was thinking particularly about pediatricians.
Yes.
That that would, you know, be a mine, a gold mine of.
Absolutely.
Possibilities, as they are for many other things, but certainly this, because I think that families, just the dynamic between siblings can be a tip-off, too. I mean, it doesn't need to be in a particular setting, you know.
Yes.
Anything like that. And so I am encouraged to know that you're still thinking about how to make this much more generally known. And because we all know that the earlier you can get to somebody, the more positive their growing up can be, and the benefits to all of us are enormous. So I'm, I'm almost as excited as you are about the possibility, so.
Kim is not shy, so when she finds an opportunity to promote this program, trust me, it gets promoted.
It does.
Yeah, I can see, it's infectious.
Thank you.
If you're going to be reaching out to physicians in private practice that do Medicaid, don't forget the family physicians, because a lot of children are not taken care of by pediatricians.
Well, what I find is, if I had a nickel for every time I heard the phrase, they'll grow out of it, I would be retired. So I get frustrated, because there's a lack of connection and collaboration. And so children who could have been identified in that first year, you know, and at year three, I've seen two-inch bumps on their heads from head banging, and they have not grown out of it. grown out of it. So that's, yes, that would be where I would like to start. Thank you.
I'm just hesitating because I don't know how to frame my question. It might be out of the realm of your presentation right now, but it's sort of coming from, we had our conference, our state conference. At that conference, one of our presenters talked about the trauma, the abuse that happens to children, and it was almost unbelievable to me, young infants. When we, when we look through this program, are we also looking to help the families? So is that part of the focus?
Yes, and, and I could talk to, I'm promoting infant mental health through my position as a social-emotional consultant, because they, they're married, so to speak. So infant mental health is a relational, family-based, home-based service. So you do treat the system, and it's beautiful. It kind of overlaps with trauma-focused CBT, but that doesn't start until three. And we also don't have any models for FASD for zero to three. So we've got this gap of zero to three where I believe really educating and promoting clinical skills with regard to FASD and early trauma would, I would think, I would hope that that would provide us with some early success.
Also, Kim does, her main focus is the programmatic piece, so the reaching out to the daycare centers, but she also can do targeted consultation on a specific child and work with their families as well. So, so yes is the answer to your question, as well as promoting infant mental health.
Yes, but I'm not in a clinical role, so I would then refer them to a provider. The only caveat with that is that I'm not servicing purely Medicaid population. So in this position, I'm in the community at large, and I run into all different types of insurances, which then kind of dictate where we go.
Also, I heard you mention foster care.
Yes.
And that's a huge issue, too, is that these children that are adopted or go through foster care, the parents are not aware of trauma that's happened to the children. Even if it's known, it's, there's not a connection, and there's not a system for letting parents know that. So it's, I was happy to hear you say your focus with foster.
Infant mental health would be where to start if they're young enough, because that is, that's its purpose in this system, is to, to work collaboratively with the foster and biological and the agencies to provide this cohesive treatment, I guess, system-wide.
I'm just very excited about this, because so much begins at such an early age. And because I have grandsons, I've been reading books that talk about how important it is because that brain, and they do make reference to that, that brain is so developmentally controlling, and those things do not get forgotten. They're part of that child as they go on in their life, so thank you for this work.
I'm gonna put in a plug, because this grant funding has been in jeopardy since we started the grant. So each year, it's like a scramble at the state for them to find a new funding source. And Kim's job is always, like, I, you know, I can't tell her not to look for a new job if she doesn't feel like her job stability is safe, but she's hung in there with us. And so any advocacy that can be done for programs like this, and specifically to continue to fund this grant, is really critical, because this is early intervention prevention. So our, you know, mental health dollars really don't cover it.
What is your email, or how do, because I have some things I want to address, but not, not here right now.
Sure.
But is there an email, so maybe after?
Or else I'll leave it with Shadia or Pam. You know, spelling my last name Heinselman. Hmm, hmm.
We've got it in print.
Oh, there you go, yes. Yeah, so it would be heinselman@OaklandCHN.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much, and appreciate that. Our next topic is the SUD update.
Noon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Is this better? Ah, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Mosby, and I am the manager of SUD, the S and T for SUD. And today, what I'm gonna be doing is I'm going to be giving you an update on the state targeted grants, response grants, the STR grants. I came before you, maybe about 18 months ago at the start. We're ending the state targeted response grants. We'll officially end April 30th. So I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that I'm going to be reviewing, one of which is the Michigan Reentry Project. The other one is the Jail Medication-Assisted Treatment Project, MAT, and the Medication-Assisted Enhancement Initiative, which was transportation. And then also, I'm going to update you on our prevention side, which is a program called Strengthening Families. We will start with the Michigan Reentry Project. One of the goals of the Michigan Reentry Project was to reduce, improve mental health, reduce opioid use, relapse and recidivism. What it was is MDHHS came to the tri-counties, so Oakland, McComb, Counties, and Wayne, and they wanted to get together a program from University of Massachusetts, Wayne State. It's called the Mission Program. And what that mission model was, it's, it's a program that has a peer and a case manager, and they go into, we had two prisons, well, jails that they went to, Michigan here, Huron Valley, which is a women's, and then also Detroit Reentry Project, which is another jail. So each county has a team that go into these facilities 90 days prior to release, and then 90 days post-release. So they go in, the population that is to be serviced, was to be serviced, was co-occurring. So anyone that had a co-occurring disorder, they would go in, it was a voluntary program, which I think is huge, and they would have someone in the jail and see if they wanted this set of services. Now, what it is, it's a whole model that they go in, so they have to, they have group, they have different, they have individual, they have a collective group. They, once they get out, they have services, so it has, they have their parole officer as well as the case manager and the peer. They stake with them the whole time during the 90 days. So it's really a great program. What they do is they help them find housing. Do they need outside services? They stay with them weekly, so they have weekly counseling. They have weekly, if, whatever type of services that they may need at the time, they have a resource. So basically, they hold their hands through everything they need upon discharge, which has been really phenomenal. Now, why it's really big? This program, like I said, started in Massachusetts, and so the collaborative of University of Massachusetts, Wayne State, MDHHS, MDOC, we started, we had technical assistance weekly. So this was huge. And even right now, during the first year, we met every week to discuss, and I think it's been a wonderful collaborative, because it's peers, case managers, as well as everyone at the table, all the stakeholders. And so to try to make sure that everyone who was in this program got exactly what they needed, were successful, and had an outlook, had a positive outlook on that. So at this time, right now, within the year and a half, we've actually had 58 discharge and 26 graduations. And that means someone that totally went through the whole six to nine months. So it's been very fabulous. The technical assistance has been enormous. I've learned a lot, because I was on most of those calls. The collaboration that you had in all of the counties, that's been fabulous as well, because each county, we have different challenges. And one of the main things that the University of Massachusetts was able to actually see, that a big, a big challenge for us is transportation. They really had no idea how far it was from one end of each county to the next, whether it be Wayne, Oakland, or McComb. And so when people get here, transportation is such a huge thing, and so we were always going to the table as the stakeholders, trying to make sure that we paid attention to the needs of the individuals that were serviced. And so basically, as I said, everyone had a big, it was a big collaboration, and I think the program worked really well. The next one is medication-assisted treatment, and I'm sure you've heard about many things about our jail MAT program. I'm very proud of it personally. Tomorrow will be its year anniversary. We have done some wonderful things. That's another wonderful collaboration you will see up there, that through the end of the year, we've had 106 participants. It has gone really well. The collaboration with Oakland County Jail, with us, Correc here in Sacred Heart, it's been wonderful. We have monthly meetings. We sit to discuss. There's a peer, there's a case manager, there's a therapist. So again, the same, actually, type of program as the Michigan Reentry is the jail MAT, but it has done a phenomenal job, I think, of making sure that those people stayed in treatment. We're at 50% follow-through for the people that started services. Once they, they get out, that they have gone to service and are continuing in service, and that's huge, because that percentage was around 5% before we started. So I think it's one of the things that I'm personally, on the SUD, very proud of. I think the opioid response and us being a trailblazer and making sure that this was started is essential. And so I look forward to seeing what the next year will bring with it, but I think it could do nothing but bring wonderful, wonderful results from it. So we've done incredibly well there. I'm gonna go over transportation. That's okay, if you can't. With the Medication-Assisted Treatment Initiative, one of the things that we did, they had different incentives that you could use for MAT, and so we chose transportation, which, as I said before, we don't often get often in a grant, but with this particular grant, with the state targeted response grant, transportation was something that we could pick. It's been phenomenal, to make sure they use Uber, Lyft, transportation services, so other things beside bus tickets. One thing, talking to the three MAT providers that we have, we live in a state, we don't have the best public transportation, and that's a big problem. And for many MAT providers, they, they open so early, many of them in their three, four, even if they're along a bus line, people don't always, the buses don't always run that time of day. And so us being able to use this grant for transportation has been huge. It has helped people stay in services, maintain services, treatment as well as receiving medication. So I think that's the biggest, the biggest part, that the overall services have been helped with the transportation initiative. And so when we started off, you know, providers like, oh, okay, we can use funding for any type of transportation, and it's like, yeah, let's find out how it works best. And so some of the MAT providers, they, I didn't even know they had a separate portion of Lyft and Uber that are like healthcare, that you could actually have a contract with. And so some of those providers were able to have a single-source agreement with Uber or Lyft, not just a regular Uber driver, that they could come and make sure that they take people to services. So I thought it was really good. We have done such wonderful, we have 410 people, unduplicated, that we have been able to service. And some of those people in that 410 number have been able to use the service continually. You know, if there's some hardship, there are protocols that they have to address during this, so that they can continue receiving the rides. So it's, it's really been a good thing. So overall, it's, it's been a wonderful thing, that transportation, and I think MDHHS, of course, one of the things that they couldn't do was, of course, everyone wanted to provide a, can we buy a bus? Can we buy a van? We're not quite there yet, but hopefully, once they look at how well everyone has used the transportation funding, who knows, you know, moving forward, if at some point, that might be something that's on the table with the transportation initiative. The last SRT is Strengthening Families. This is on our prevention side. Strengthening Families is a evidence-based practice. It's called Strengthening Families Iowa Model, and it's ages 10 to 14. And what is primarily set up to do is to reduce substance use in the youth and the family. And so what happens is, you have a family, it's a seven-week program, two hours. So the children go to one hour, the parents go to another hour, they have a family dinner before the program, and then they have, each have their own session. And so then, when they come back in that last hour, what they do is they role-play, they have games, it's for problem-solving, conflict resolution, and it's to try to help bridge that communication that we know so often can happen in our 10 to 14-year-olds. So it is a huge commitment. And so as you see there, we have 14 trainings, we have 42 families registered, 34 parents attended, and 25 youth. And as I said, that's kind of a big time commitment, if you think about it. That's 14 hours for a family. Of course, after you've worked all day, they're usually in the evening, after school, but if you look up the model in general, it's been some wonderful success. And so it's been successful for us as well, and our coalitions who do our prevention services are the ones that actually put on the sessions. We go and review, we have our prevention coordinator that goes and reviews to make sure that they're doing the evidence to the model, so making sure that the youth and the parents are getting exactly what they need. One of my favorite parts of it is that they have to have a family meal, and that's included in the grant as well, that they have a family meal before they, they start this process. And I think that's good to kind of bridge the gap. So it's had wonderful success with our network, and so I'm just looking forward to hopefully hearing some, some other good stories when it's all completed. Demutz wraps everything up. Questions?
A couple of questions. First, how long is the grant for the Michigan Rep and the Mat?
It ends, it's been two years, so our, concluding our second year is April 30th. So we're actually in our second grant year.
Then what will happen?
Well, so for, there's a new grant. It's called the State Opioid Response Grant that we'll be receiving from MDHHS, that the federal government. And so with that grant, it will continue. That was one of the things that they're gonna, they're, they're gonna try to do in this next grant year. We don't know if it'll be funded longer than the three years, but right now, it looks like it definitely will get another year. And so we're looking at that, our last technical call, we're looking at that now, what that means, how many more people will be able to service with that grant.
And so how do inmates become part of the, both the Michigan Rep and the Mat? Is it a referral from intake, or is it the person has to ask for this help?
Well, there's what they did for the MyRep. They actually had a database of people they looked at, that when they came in, either stated, either even if they had a substance use or mental health, or they thought they had both. So they had a preconceived list already. So they, they had the jail. So they have a caseworker that's in the jail, they got the referrals, and then they looked through the list, and then they would go and they would offer. You know, they would set appointments and see, are you interested? And they could say yes or no, and then they would they looked at, that when they came in, either stated, either even if they had a substance use or mental health, or they thought they had both. So they had a preconceived list already. So they, they, they had, um, the jail. So they have a caseworker that's in the jail, they got the referrals, and then they looked through the list, and then they would go and they would offer, you know, they would set appointments and see, are you interested? And they could say yes or no, and then they would continue on down the list. So that's pretty much how the my rep. Now, in the jail, it's actually kind of the same thing as the referral, because it's voluntary. And so when they come in, there's a, a set of questions that they get to answer, and then someone asks them, would they like to be a part of it? Now, the other way that they get a referral in the jail is when they come through medical in the jail. That's one of the largest ways. They can either go ask a caseworker who's in the jail, or they go through medical, and the medic, the medical nurse, whoever is reviewing them right then, says, you know, I think you might be, you know, a good candidate. Would you be interested?
That was going to be my question, knowing that everyone goes through a medical screening, and usually the nurse is the first line of defense to identify some of these issues. So then my last question is, do we have stats of those offered the assistance, how many accept it? Do we know that number?
Yes, and after this first year, I don't have it with me, but yes, we do have all of those numbers. We have all of those numbers that can be provided.
I would be interested to see that. And then is there a differentiation between those that accept the help when it's offered through a caseworker at the beginning, or when it's offered through medical? Because I would think it would be more readily received when offered through medical.
We do, most of it, most of it is offered through medical. It's very little offered through the case manager. But we kind of have both of those. We, we do have both of those, but nine times out of 10, so the data I get, and just so you know, I really get the data weekly. And so there's a sheet, and we look at everybody, so pretty much everyone has their data points that they already, they already hold. And we look at, where do they come from? How long do they stay? It'll be interesting to see in this, this first year, when we first started, we had a lot of people that came in and were leaving, and we were kind of like, ah, you know, you're only here a week, did you even get to see the doctor? Right now, we have a lot more stability. We're running, the, the pilot project is 24, we're running about 23 regularly. And so from that, yes, we can get you, my plan is, after this first year, that we can really take a deep dive, so we can know all of the numbers that we, we need to look at.
And then one final idea is that, it's my understanding that most of the jails in the tri-county area has a contract with a separate agency to provide medical. So most of, like, the nurses and doctors, particularly nurses, are not hired by the corrections department, they work for a company that contracts with corrections. So if, if there could be sort of the inroad between you and those companies that hire those nurses, to be able to go educate those nurses, to make them understand how incredibly successful it is that even more people could be helped, just as an idea or thought, to go to the companies, not just corrections.
Oh, I will say, for us, since every stakeholder is at the table, we do that monthly. So it's integral, we have our list serve chain for all of us. So any times we have any challenges, everyone's at the table every month. So we have the nurses are at the table, we have the case managers are at the table. Every stakeholder is there. So if there's something that someone may be, oh, I'm not sure about, it's a continual conversation, and I think that's why it's done so well. Because everybody has to talk every day. This is not a program that you cannot talk, you can't, you, you, we need each other. So I'm going over to the jail, they're conversing with me, I'm on the chain with medical, so that is already happening. So if there's anything, so if there's a decision, even the medical doctor, you know, we talk about, why is something happening, why isn't it happening, what are you seeing? Like I said, it's a very wonderful collaboration, because everybody's at the table, corrections, us, medical, everyone's there, and everyone's there monthly. So we get to take all of our suggestions, and then there's a hierarchy board that sits and discusses other issues that maybe we can't discuss at, at a particular level, and we make the decision, we make these decisions together. So I think that's what's important. And so then I think as you move forward, like you said, if there's any stigma to be had, and, and as we know, even with the, the my rep, it's breaking down that stigma. But that's what I've been so proud of with the technical assistance with the my rep, is real conversations about how people are feeling, with whether it be Vivitros, Aboxone, Methadone. I know it's a work in progress, but I can tell you this, just like a big ship, the rudder is changing. Little by little, people are like, oh, okay, some things I haven't thought of, ideas I haven't thought of, seeing progress. And then getting to know the people, the frontline people that actually do the work. It was amazing, all of the caseworkers and peers, we all had a meeting. It was phenomenal, to see how many people love what they do, and want to make sure that the best care is given to people. It was phenomenal. It was, it was more than 30 people in the room. And we had really good collaborative conversations that really talked about the heat of, how do we, how do we hit this epidemic? What else do we need to do? Where are we going? And so for me, in both of these, it has been, it's been a wonderful year. I really do. I think people have changed, you know, the rudder's starting to change, understanding really what this opioid epidemic, how big it really is. I don't know if everybody really understood the depths. You know, we know, okay, we need to do something, but how critical it is and how it's, it's touched so many families. So with that, everyone is always at the table.
Thank you. Crystal, I appreciate your insights. You mentioned early in your presentation that there were different challenges across Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County, and I think that was on the jail diversion program?
Yep.
And I was sort of curious, what were the differences between the three counties?
Well, you know, one thing is staffing is always something, and with the criteria sometimes for the peers, you know, you have to have not had anything on your record. And those challenges were real. So you might find the right, right candidate, but could they get vetted to go into the jail? And so that was a challenge, which none of the providers had anything to do with. And those are some of the things with M D L O C, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything about. So in the beginning, that was really a big challenge, to make sure that we were able to get people that actually could provide the service in the jail. The other, as I said, being transportation. When they came in, the, the amount of time some of the caseworkers were taking to get from one end of just Wayne County to Wayne County, or Oakland County to Oakland County, they didn't realize that sometimes it was two hours just for Oakland County. So if this person that was receiving services, it took them two hours to get there, two hours to get back, you've already spent four hours in your day, that you could have been providing some service. So those are things that if you don't live here, you really don't have an idea if you're using something, a model from another state. And so when they got here, they got to really see how big Michigan really was. And so you, you had to do workarounds, because of course, people get, the people who are trying to provide the service, get a little frustrated, it's like, you know, I want to provide the service, but it's taken me four to five hours just to get to the person and get back to the person. And so we've had to work around a lot of those. And so it's been a lot of, it's, it's always shifting and changing, trying to make sure that we can service at the level of service that we all want to present.
So what, some differences between Oakland and, between Oakland and Detroit, and Wayne, and Wayne and Macomb, it's just differences between our tri-county and, okay, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just differences like that.
Second question I had, had to do with the transportation services. I assume that's to get to the methadone clinics and?
Yes, yes.
We're three providers, so that's what I guessed. Okay, thanks.
At the CMHA conference, Christina and Lieutenant McClellan gave a wonderful presentation on the jail M A T program. And maybe you could get ahold of the PowerPoint, because it was a wonderful presentation, and it went into detail just on that part of what Crystal discussed.
The model that's used with the strengthening families, you made reference?
Oh, it's, um, it's called, the model is strengthening families Iowa program, ages Iowa, it's 10 to 14. Ages 10 to 14. And I just tell you that, so when you look it up, you're welcome.
I was going to ask about the involvement of peers in, in all of this. And I appreciate the fact that I hadn't really thought about the, the vetting, that that might be challenging in, in terms, because I know how often people want to, who have had a positive experience, want to share that and, and can be so impactful, you know, with other people. Do you have a lot of, is it easy to recruit peers? I mean, not, I'm not getting to the part where the vetting, but I mean, do you find that it's easy to recruit peers? And then in a team, how much of a role does a peer play in kind of bringing that lived experience to the conversation?
With, actually, both of these, it's huge, because they're the support. One of the things that definitely I say for the jail M A T program, the case manager and the peer work closely together, and I says, you're pretty much the glue. I said, because they may start, and like anyone else, they may get to a point, they're like, oh, I don't know if I want to do this. And so you have the glue, you have a peer who's there, that's available to them, to kind of walk them through what this is going to be. So you have the pay case manager that may provide all the resources, but the peer, and even for the my rep program, what they do is, they're the glue to kind of make sure that it's going to hold itself together. And so often, just having conversations with the peers, that's their largest role. So yes, there are many wonderful peers, and once they get in those roles, they're like, wow, you know, I really didn't realize I was such a humongous part. I say, yeah, I say, you're really the program. I know we do a lot of things, and we have meetings, I said, but the case manager and the peers, beside the people who provide the medication, they're a big part of the program. There are what, who's going to keep them every day when they're having doubts engaged. They're the engagement. That's a big part of what they do. And that's what's so wonderful, and sometimes they don't even realize, it's like, no, this person stayed in because of sharing that lived experience you already had, going through what they went through. And so when they see those successes as well, I think that's what makes it so beneficial.
I would think that having peer involvement also probably would be helpful to the professionals who might not detect where somebody's wavering, or, or maybe at a crossroad. And I would imagine that having a peer involvement would be kind of helpful in, in detecting those moments where it could go south on you, really, so.
Support is definitely, differently of support, and what it does is, it's, it is a safety net. It's a huge safety net, because when we have conversations, as you said, the case manager may not know one thing, the therapist may get something else, but they're a collaborative team, and so when they get together, then it gets caught. As you said, then it can be dealt with, and oftentimes, the peer is the first person that kind of does the nudge on, you know, why don't you go talk to your therapist again? Or let's circle around, so maybe, you know, you can have a different dialogue when you get to, I'm your case manager or your therapist.
It's a key component, and that it's appreciated. Thank you.
It's to me like the biggest issue.
One of the, it's one of the large issues, and I think, you know, sitting where you sit, you hear that all the time, but it is huge. And I wish we had a better public transportation, but hopefully, people are, are looking at, yeah, we have to figure out how we're gonna, it's, it's real, how are we going to get people where they need to go?
Is that a big problem for your, for your group to manage?
Um, well, the transportation now, no, the providers have been wonderful. So we just get together and we talk about what protocols they send in, what protocols to make sure that people do receive the transportation. So we're always having conversation on how, how to best use the dollars that they receive. The transportation funding in particular has just been kind of extra, because they could go ahead and use some options that they hadn't used before.
You co-make all the funds?
I wish, but no, so, but no.
Good work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
This will be another opportunity for public comment. I would like to, we'll need a, a motion to.
I would like to use some social capital with Ms. Kucherik. We are currently a board of 11, because we've had a resignation. What is the official quorum for our board? Is it duly appointed, the, the number, or is it active?
It depends upon what your vote. But general rules, certain things need the. Certain votes, like going into closed session, where you have to have the supermajority of all elected, so your quorum would still be seven. But for general decisions, usually the quorum is the majority of those present, as long as it's the quorum of your 11, so six. So I think your question is, can we move on the investment strategy tonight? And the answer is yes. But I would like to look at the bylaws quickly, if Dr. Taub has them.
Make such an important decision and have it be pulled back on us, so that's why I wanted to check. I was going to forge ahead, but I thought, on second thought, better do.
Why don't you say do it?
Okay.
All right.
And if you have any issues, please contact.
Yours.
Oh, good. Ready to make the transition here? At this point in time, I'm going to call the special board meeting to order, and Pam, if you would call the roll, please. Dr. Clots is absent. Ms. Kucherik? Mr. Lansman?
Here.
Ms. Newman is absent. Mr. Rubin?
Here.
Ms. Shulman?
Here.
Mrs. Summers?
Here.
Mr. Taub?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda? During none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Lansman, second.
Motion by Mr. Lansman, second by Dr. Taub.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is our opportunity for public comment. Apparently, we have very little public here, so I think we're going to go on to our item. Patrick is going to present on our investment strategy. It's an item for approval. And pending the approval, there may be a secondary aspect to this.
So we're asking for board approval to proceed with a recommendation for an RFP for our investment portfolio. We mentioned some of the pros and cons associated with, with going with a full RFP. The RFP can be issued, and assets can be held by one single firm, to offer better economies of scale. We mentioned that during our last presentation when we met in January, and also reduce administrative costs and fees. Some of the cons of doing it is also, it's going to require staff's time and to meet the transition date of March 29th. But adopting a potentially new investment banker will also create, you know, learning curve with their reporting of financial documentation, which we have become used to with the other firm. So we, we want to move forward and want board approval to, to offer RFP for our investment portfolio. This also will satisfy our requirement to bid our investments every three years. It's been three years now since we last bid out our investments, so we will satisfy that requirement, and also we'll be able to have one firm to manage the entire portfolio and hold the securities. So we would like the board's approval to proceed with a formal RFP.
Motion to approve the recommendation?
A motion and then discussion? I saw move.
Motion by Dr. Taub, second. Ms. Kucherik. Discussion. Dr. Taub.
On, on the presentation that you made a couple of times, and that we received online, and, and, oh, projection for six months, one thing I'm not clear on, before we vote on this, I want to be clear on it. I know that, like, although we amortize our money into 12 payments, we don't get it that way all the time, and sometimes we get it late, and we don't pay it out that way. So some months we have a lot of money on hand, and some months, we're actually technically in a paper deficit. So this cash that's on hand, to me, is a large sum, maybe not a big percentage of our total budget. In what form is that cash? Like, is it, is it just like cash nowhere? Is it cash in a savings account? I would be happy to know that it was cash in a money market savings account, not in money market funds, which we couldn't, wouldn't be fluid enough, but a money market savings account, they work on like the average amount that the account has per month, and you can take the money out and, or write checks against the savings account. So I never was clear, Sid brought it up a couple of times, and I never was clear, like, what is that money? Like, if it's $11 million sometime during the six-month projection, is it cash sitting that they're just holding on to, or is it a savings account, or a money market savings account?
Is this question separate from the investment policy? Because cash, the cash flow presentation and the investment was two different conversations.
Correct. At the end of the cash flow, Anya said, you know, we have this money, and we can't do anything till we find out how much we're, we're going to pay out, and how much, what our cash flow situation is, and then we have to decide whether we're going to invest the rest. And to me, cash is sitting around, obviously, we can't invest it in something and tie it up, but it could be in a money, I don't see how that's separate, to me, that's part of the same discussion, so.
Okay. Well, to answer your question, you know, there's cyclical times during the month where our cash balance is high, and then we pay providers, we have accounts payable, and we have to maintain certain portions of cash at certain periods in the month. But we, it's no time at the end of the month where we have a, a large sum that we would be available for investment, because we know that other bills are going to come due, so you have to have the money on hand to pay it, so.
My question isn't answered, my, my question is, that money that you're having on hand to pay out and take in and not actually tie it up in an investment, how is that being held? Is it in a savings account?
It's held.
Is cash in somebody's drawer, or is it in a money?
It's held in our payroll, in our regular accounts payable, bills are paid out of our checking account.
It's in a checking account?
Yes.
Is it a money market checking account? Does it earn any interest at all on the average amount held in that fund?
I believe the way the, the way the checking account is set up, the available balance earns interest.
You answered the question, because there was a two-part question. Money that's in the checking account. So you leave that there. It accumulates, it goes up and down every day. You know, there's no electronic payments out of that account, correct?
Other than ones that we initiate. A lot of our payments, we pay providers, and we pay most of our vendors electronically, electronic payments, yes. That's correct.
The account earns some minimal interest.
Yes.
Or than what you could get in an overnight. So, one of the concerns was, it's in the RFP.
Well, the RFP includes, it's, we, we use the same scope that we issued in 2015, and that is to get a investment, investment advisor to be able to manage the portfolio.
Board member, and I don't know how any other board member feels, would like to read the RFP.
And?
Or I take a vote? Anybody else interested in looking at that?
Chair, I thought we were voting to give them the approval to do an RFP, they probably have not drafted it yet. But if that's part of the motion, say that before they release it, we review it, I guess.
I think that's beyond our scope.
I agree.
I agree.
Move the action. Thank you, I, I appreciate you articulating that, and that's how I feel.
I understand what your objection is. You don't feel that the board has a right to know who is, what is in the RFP, and who is it going to?
Can I add, Sid, that we would be asking for board representation on the RFP committee? So just like we have in the past, we would be seeking volunteers who want to be more involved in the entire process. At this point, as was noted, the board hasn't voted to proceed with the RFP, so it is in development. We've tried to prepare, so we're not behind the eight ball on timing, but we do need to decide, yes, we're going to do it, and then volunteers can join the RFP committee to be more involved in the entire process, including the selection.
I appreciate you clarifying that, because I didn't hear that before, but, and I'd like to be one of the people.
I voted on the RFP, so appointing people to the committee would be a little bit ahead of the curve. Are there any other questions, comments, discussion, before we take the vote? Pam, would you call the roll, please?
Approve the investment strategy to issue an RFP. Charak?
Yes.
Lansman?
Yes.
Rubin?
Yes.
Shulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Summers?
Yes.
Mr. Taub?
Yes.
Motion carries. The subsequent issue is now, since we are going to pursue the RFP, is to establish the membership on the RFP review committee, correct?
I know that all the, you know, board members have busy schedules. We do want to offer board representation as part of the review committee. Traditionally, we would like to have about five to six persons total on the review committee, and to have two to three board members representing our, our review committee.
I'm going to ask for those volunteers now, for, for those of you who made the effort to be here today and take this vote, so if there is interest in participating in the RFP committee, I think this is the time to make it know.
Yes.
Mr. Rubin?
I, while I was on the RFP committee for the selection of the last CPA vendor, not core provider, audit vendor, I'm going to pass on this one.
Are there interests, Ms. Kucherik?
Thank you.
At any time, we will have Ms. Kucherik and Mr. Rubin identified as the board representatives on the RFP review committee, if there's no objection by the rest of the board. Okay.
I'd like to also mention that, you know, there are a couple of regular scheduled meetings during the regular eight to five hours that would be mandatory, that you attend in order for, to be a part of the committee.
How many meetings do you anticipate?
I think it may be two.
Two, okay. Is that agreeable to the two of you, to be able to make yourself available for that?
I have a question for you on that. That's for pre-release, or is that post-resee of the responses and for the evaluation? Not that I'm on that committee, I was just curious.
Post-resee of the responses.
Board members?
We have two or three from our.
There's a makeup of the committee. Maybe you'd like to share.
From staff, yeah, there's two or three of staff members. The participants from the staff would probably be myself, Eddie Brown, and possibly Anya, and then two or three board members as well, in addition to our procurement person, Jen Hillier. She's not included in the review committee, she's.
The consultant, like, to the committee?
Yes, she's overseeing the process.
What's, what's her professional background?
She's our specialist in procurement and contracts. So she's familiar with bids, RFPs, closed bids, illegal ramifications associated with a proper RFP, and closed bids.
It's another board meeting, or at least two more board approvals in this short period.
I don't know what else would have to be approved, if we have representation from the board to issue an RFP. I mean, we would.
For the approval of?
I mean, we, we issue RFPs often, and there's really usually no, there's oftentimes we issue RFPs, I didn't think we had to come back for another approval. Once the, once we, the review committee decided that we selected the best candidate for the.
The best candidate.
No, we have a list of, we already have a list that we had from our previous, and we'll add names to the distribution. Oh, it's a lot more inclusive than that, we may have a list of 50 entities that the RFP will go to, and no, and last time we sent out 50, we only got six responses. So we, we try to have a large pool, so that no one is excluded.
Just looking at this list here, and for my, most productive investment firms are not on it. So, anyway, that's, that's why I'm asking these questions.
In the RFP process, the board who ultimately determines who receives the contract ought not be part of the creation of the RFP, nor designating to whom these RFPs go out to. It would be really problematic. We're on the chair, on the committee, to say which finalists should come forward before the board, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I just want that very clear in the minutes, that we're not creating the document, and we're not saying who it goes to, at all. It should not be happening.
I think in the past, there's been discussion regarding the inclusion of minority vendors, and that's about as far as the board has gone, that, that's a priority for the, the board, to make sure it's an inclusive list.
Okay, thank you.
My side. So as part of this process, are you guys going to consult with the county to see if there's any, any additional organizations or any additional legalese that might have to go into the RFP for financing?
Our, our procurement team is well informed with process, protocol, procedures associated with it, so I'm sure they have all the bases covered when it comes to issuing a RFP.
I'm sure that, for all the number of RFPs that have been put out already, I'm sure that the process is clean and clear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any other additional comments? This meet, special meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.